One, two, three, four.
All nine.
That sounded like Mr. Russell. All right, if we're all here. Susan, are you ready?
I'm ready to go.
Ms. Joan, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
All right, then. Let's get rolling. So I would like to call the Groton Board of Education's regular meeting to order. It is Monday, February 22nd, and it's 6:03. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Rick, since you are, I just spotted your beautiful face. If you would be willing to lead us in the pledge, I would be so honored for you to do that. You might have to unmute, though.
And Mark, we might need a flag.
Okay, okay. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Rick.
It was interesting. There's many delays. Thank you.
My favorite is when people try to sing.
Yes.
I always, I always. That was very interesting when it's not well-choreographed. All right, and so, Ms. Susan, do we have, um, do we have any, uh, any recognition of any, any people?
No, I don't think so. Not for tonight.
Okay, all right. And so I'm going to move us on to comments from citizens. Um, and Ms. Joan, did you receive anyone who wanted to comment?
No, I did not.
Okay. All right, so I, yeah, I see you. Just one second. Um, all right, so I think what I'm going to have people do, Mr. Frickman, I will absolutely recognize you. It's good to see you. I'm glad that you're here. Um, and if there's someone else who wants to chat, if you could just kind of throw that into the chat box. And then between Joan and I, we're going to try to recognize you if that's possible. But, Mr. Frickman.
Thank you. First, Tom Frickman, I live at 621 Warren Avenue, Mystic. I'm also on the RTM Education Committee, and I am a teacher myself. First, I want to say thank you to the board and all the educational members here. And I really want to thank all the teachers for all their efforts and hard work this year. I understand everything they're going through as a teacher myself. So today I speak again out of concern for the children's learning time and their quest. A review of the calendar and schedules, educational days. Especially, my focus is on the Wednesdays. Wednesday should include instructional time for all students. At the middle school, the students get 30 minutes of advisory and then can choose to attend office hours later in the day if they need extra help. For students who do not need extra help, there's a zero instruction happening on Wednesdays. So I'm really unclear on how that can be counted as a school day in the eyes of the state. And as a teacher myself, we, I actually teach 30 minutes, a class on Wednesdays. And I meet with my kids firsthand. We have instruction on those days. So also, I want to add the weeks with holidays. We use Wednesdays as in-person learning days. Last week, there were two holidays, one half-day, and Friday was canceled. Wednesday was the only day without a storm, and our school remained closed again. I would appreciate, hopefully you guys will discuss this openly tonight, to clarify Wednesday instruction. As I know this has been asked several times. And really, I haven't had many clear answers on what we can do to increase instruction for our kids on Wednesdays. Thank you very much for your time, and that's it.
Thank you. What I realized that I was so excited about starting the comment section. Forgot to read sort of the very beginning. And just for clarification, I think I am going to go back and do that if you will so allow me to do that, folks. On that this is the area of the comment section. Um, and this is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. And board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comment section. Comments assist in portion of the board meeting, and citizens should state their names and addresses for the record, which Mr. Frickman did. Do we have, do we have anyone else that's on, currently on the Zoom meeting that has an interest to speak to the board? So I do, I have, I do have one. Um, it was sent to me. He was not able to make it, and he asked that I read it for him. Does the board have an issue about that?
No.
No.
Okay. So this is, um, for Miss, for Mr. Vincent Evoli. If I pronounce your name wrong, I am incredibly sorry. And it says, "I've been trying to attend, regularly attend recent board meetings, but unfortunately, I'm unable to be present this evening. I would like to share a few of my concerns, and while I understand you have been in uncharted waters the last year. I am, as I am sure you are, extremely concerned about our children, and not only the education, but their mental health. I have a fourth grader who has the advantage of having both parents at home with him during this online learning days. I can't imagine what it must be like for families that don't, that does not have that support. We must get our kids back in school, and if it can't happen soon enough, especially at the elementary level. All the students I've seen have stated that trans transmission, especially in the elementary level, is very low. These are the most impactful years of child education, and I feel that Groton is just not doing enough to get these kids back to school full-time. If you feel that you are, then we are not hearing about it, and we need to know more about what your plan looks like. It seems everyone around us has a plan to or is going full-time. Ledger, North Stonington, and other districts along the 95th quarter are full-time. GBS needs to provide the option for parents who want their kids full-time and an option for those who don't. To get these kids back in school, why aren't we testing students, administration, educators, once a week at a minimum? Is that an option? What can we do as parents to keep, help keep this moving? Thank you for your consideration. I hope to hear more about GPS's educational plans to meet our children's academic and emotional well-being in the immediate future. And very truly yours, Vince." So that was from him. I don't know where he lives, so I cannot give you the address, and I apologize about that.
Kim, I had a question. I couldn't hear. You read it very quickly. And there was one sentence in there that I didn't catch at all. I think it was about testing.
Yes, about COVID testing.
Oh, COVID testing. I didn't know if he meant testing children where they are now. Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Joan, I'd be more than happy to forward the comments that I read. Are there any other comments? Hearing none. I'm going to move us on to comments from the comments that we've received. Response to comments from citizens, and Susan, I am.
Are you going to answer the question, or?
Um, I was wondering, Ms. Austin, if you would be willing, um, to talk anything about what Mr. Frickman said about the Wednesday's instructional time? Because I know that we've had this conversation quite a bit.
So I was actually.
It's not answering the question at all.
I was actually going to be reporting on this, on the strategic phased-in planning. That's part of my superintendent's report. Are we able, are we moving on to that now?
Um, so what we can say is that you'll be talking about Wednesdays and the opening expansion of the cohorts. Then, um, so, Mr. Frickman, I see Andrea is there now. Hi, Andrea. So what, what, what we're going to do is that we're just going to move that comment, um, to, um, to when, uh, excuse me, this is, Ms. Austin is going to report out about that thing, about, about the, about that thing, about those two items, if that's possible. Thank you. I need to slow down. So I am going to move us on to student representative reports.
Whoa, 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 Kim, hold on.
Okay, I'm sorry, Liz.
Um, response to comments from citizens, that's what the next part was supposed to be, correct?
That's what we're in, yep.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate, I just want to share something that I just read on my Facebook account. Is that, that, um, starting March 1st, teachers are going to be eligible for the vaccination.
I was going to report on that, too.
Okay, but I just, you know, so but in response to getting, getting us back. You know, there are things that we're working hard to do, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim?
Yes, Rita.
Could you please reiterate, um, board's responses to comments, what our protocol is? It's only for clarification purposes, correct?
Nope, nope, that's not, that's not correct. Um, in the middle.
Changed it.
No, no. Comments from citizens, we can ask for clarification, Rita, which is exactly what you did. Which is exactly what you did. We are now on response to comments from citizens. And so I've asked Susan if she could report on that, and she stated that she is going to, um, that she is, that she is going to report that out on her superintendent's report. And Liz followed up because they were asking about sort of vaccinations, or can we get more testing done? And she just noted for the Facebook. So it was in line with that. But usually, but Rita, to your point, usually we use that as a way of putting it back into the superintendent to see if they can follow up on any of those questions. Any, anything else? All right, hearing that. Um, can we go to student representative report?
I don't believe, I don't believe they're here.
Okay, great. Mr. Keller, if, um, I know that this is such weird time period, but, um, I, I think that the board just really enjoys at least hearing something from them, an email or something about what's happening from a student perspective. I cannot wait until we can get back to the time when we're in person and we can hear, we can hear them. But I'm wondering if you would be willing to reach out to them, just to at least to see if they can give us a report, report out. Thank you. Ms. Austin, if you would be willing to start off your superintendent report.
I'd be happy to. I just want to take you back to the spring of 2019 when we went remote kind of instantly. And were able to, like, in a day's time, put up supplementary learning at first and then move our way into remote learning full until the summer. And all the way through, we've been meeting with grade levels and departments, doing some curriculum compacting and really using priority standards and assessments to know how our kids are doing all along the way. Administration has been working with teachers. As a matter of fact, this summer, we had over 100 teachers and administrators and paras and custodians volunteering their time to work on different parts of the plan, whether it was health and safety, whether it was curriculum instruction, whether it was the technology. And I only say that because what we did was we uploaded all of these plans on the website. And we continued to update and revise. As a matter of fact, I've just updated our spring so that you can see the elements of the spring in a hybrid way at this point. We are looking forward to having more in-person learning. We're going to do that as we've done everything in working with the committee, working with Steve Mansfield. He's actually joining us on our first meeting, which is Wednesday. And we have some parents and we have some board members on there as well. But we're really going to be looking, I've sent lots of documents, the latest CDC document. We've sent communications between some of my colleagues in East Lime and Waterford. We've sent out a template to look at what is it going to look like March, April, and May? And I would have to tell you, while some of you may not realize it, but we have been expanding our cohorts all along the way. In November, we began to make sure that, and even before November, that all of our students with specialized IEPs were coming in four days a week. Preschoolers are now able to come in four days a week. We've had students who are English language learners disconnected. And really based on each school's community, we've been able to expand those cohorts. But we really, ultimately, our goal is to bring in, and probably in a manner very similar to my colleagues, bring in kids so that we are making sure that by, you know, in this springtime, we'll be able to get everybody in at least the four days a week. Um, and then by the end of the year, five days a week. Um, we'll be working out the details on that plan. And, um, I just have to say that we did get very, you may have heard the governor, but March 1, we are going to be able to roll out the vaccine. And the, the real desire is to bring the vaccine to our schools and to set up clinics in our schools so that it'll make it very convenient for our teachers. I know that in parallel, they're also expanding the age for 55 to 64 as well. But teachers, paraprofessionals, all those people who are working with children will be kind of first online, on deck. And I've always said with the promise of that vaccine, I think it really allows us to expand and make sure that our kids are coming back full. I know Wednesday's been a concern. As a matter of fact, I've written, I've written all the teachers, I've talked to the teachers and the administrators. Wednesday was never to be a day off. Wednesday was always kind of a morning session or, um, actual office hours that included instruction, Zoom. It could be special support. It could be small group. It could be whole group. Um, and there was supposed to be independent work done. I've heard at different levels, different things, and I don't know if it's teacher by teacher, but I have asked the administrators to follow up for me and just make sure. It's been imperative, though, and every district has done this, to have some planning collaborative time on Wednesdays. Because this job to teach kids right in front of you and to teach them remotely, as Mr. Frickman said, is really something that is unprecedented. We've never had to do this, and it takes a lot of time in planning to do it the right way. Um, you may have seen some pictures in the newspaper. I happened to be at Northeast when the reporter wanted to find out what it looked like, and he took many, many pictures, which I will hope to share with the board. A picture's worth a thousand words, to see the kids engaged in the classroom and on Zoom at the same time with their teachers facilitating their lessons and having them off they go, readers, writers, mathematicians, to do some independent work, you know, is really something to behold. And I'm not saying it's perfect. It's not necessarily what we're used to. But I'm hoping that what we've learned through this experience will be able to take into the future and make education even better. So I know I have a great team that I'm going to be working with. We hope to get out information by the end of the week, at least something that will help to identify the route that we're heading. And, but it will be very similar to some of those other schools. And with the vaccine coming by March 1st, you know, my, my goal really is in March to start staggering those groups to come in. And so that by April, we'll have kids here so that we're beginning the assessment process. We've actually used Wednesdays to bring in some of our remote learners for assessment and to really encourage them to come back to hybrid. Some families are ready and some families are not, and we respect that. So, um, you know, that's where we are, where, you know, a lot of people are concerned that we're so far behind the others. But I'm telling you, we're working very closely and we share ideas all the time. And there's some districts that have taken some of Groton's lead on things and are doing things very similarly. I've been asked to be on an assessment task force for the state because of the work that we're doing with both remote assessments using the interim assessment blocks and the ways teachers are using them to inform their instruction is, you know, really fine-tuning their instruction based on what kids know and what they're able to do and what they still need to know. So, um, you know, please know that working side by side with CAPS, the Connecticut Association of School Superintendents, with the Learn districts, with the Alliance superintendents, and the Health Department has been a critical piece of, you know, making sure that we'll have the right plan, the safe, secure plan that will bring our kids back, and then even looking into the future in the summer and the spring to re-engage kids, whether it's a camp, like a STEM camp or a STEAM camp for kids, whether it's credit recovery. But we're looking at lots of different opportunities, too. So you'll get more information by the end of the week. Does, do any of the board members have any questions about that?
Susan, I had a question about Wednesdays. Um, in this plan going forward, I noticed that Hartford, a lot of the other districts are going five days a week with a half a day on Wednesdays for teachers' planning. Sometimes we have early dismissals on Tuesdays. I mean, to me, it doesn't have to be the Wednesday half-day. It could be the Tuesday, whatever works into the schedule where the teachers have professional development. Um, sometimes in the afternoon on Tuesdays, isn't that the case where they have half-days?
Yes, and I, I envision that before we end the school year, for sure. But I think we, what we want to do is we want to expand these cohorts so that we're doing it very safely. So instead of bringing out back 100% of the kids by next week, we're going to do it incrementally in phased planning.
And that was the other. Hartford is, oh, yeah, Hartford is also. What I'm just saying is that I, I'd like to see the five days a week with a half a day, one day of the week, whether it's Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever lines up, you know, better with Groton, with the educators in Groton. But not to have a half-day Tuesday and then a half-day Wednesday.
Right, right. And I'm glad you're going to be on the committee with me, Rita, and Andrea, thank you. I see Dean's hand up.
Dean?
Yeah, earlier you, uh, people noted that the student representatives weren't here, and you'd love to hear from them. Uh, you might hear something like this. I'm getting this from my kids. Two words. This sucks. They are grinning and bearing it. They put up with quite a lot. People are very fond of saying that kids are whiners these days. Well, at least in this respect, they're not. Uh, some are cracking. Um, I think the question that parents have is, well, if other districts are opening up, are they being reckless or are we being overly cautious? Because the presumption is that the disease is the disease, the virus is the virus, and there isn't any sort of magic shield over the other towns. What are they doing that we're not? I think that's, that's the question, and I think people are looking for a simple answer if there is one.
Well, I don't think they are doing things differently. I think we're pretty uniform. We just have not, um, put the whole plan together. And there is a difference between some of the smaller districts and the larger. You saw the cases that were escalated in both Groton and New London versus an old line. So there, there have been differences in the communities, but, you know, we're just, I mean, they, the other superintendents have done this cautiously, too. You know, rolling it out, and they're not all coming back full in March. They have a staggered every other week where a certain group is coming back more. So that's really kind of the plan we're thinking about. But I'll be bringing the committee together to really make sense of what's going to work best in Groton. So, and I'll be communicating that with everyone.
Will you be, um, will we have like status report, like Wednesday is going to be your first committee meeting? Could, is, does it make sense for, to have, to throw a status report on the website just so that people can state, see that we are meeting and stuff? I think, I mean, it goes back to the fact that people have been looking for some communication. And so if they at least know that we're meeting, um, and that you've had a meet, and, and obviously, you know, you're not going to have everything resolved on Wednesday.
Right.
But to, to at least state that, um, that we're meeting and that this is sort of what the journey is forward.
We're actually going to have a whole section on spring reopening. And I actually already have a document that should be posted there, and I'll make sure it is, about what are, what is some of the early thinking on this and what have we already accomplished? Um, so that we'll keep uploading and, um, having that available.
Thank you. I mean, I, I, I know that this is, that this is hard, and this is hard for everyone. Um, and, um, but like, we're doing the best we can.
Right. And we're, we're, you know, you can only hope and pray that this kind of thing doesn't happen but every hundred years. You know, this has been hard on everybody.
Yep.
So Middletown and Bristol and Bridgeport is all.
Thank you.
But Mr. Gunner may want to put that in the chat box for us.
He can, but, um, but we won't be responding to that, but that absolutely, we can take, um, we can absolutely take, um, a, to make sure that it gets recorded and, um, that can be part of frequently asked questions.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yep.
Good idea.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
It's our budget is our next topic. And we've done a lot of work, as you know, with many, many budget meetings. And our budget actually began, um, the work on the budget began with the central office team coming together with Dr. Grenier back in September. We've never gotten such a head start. And with our administrators putting together site budgets early on. And, um, and really working very closely with this board, looking at different options. And so, um, I don't know if it would be helpful if you'd like to see, um, the staggered plan where we looked at the 1.1%. We looked at the, you know, less than half a percent, and then we really got down to 0%. So that, um, there, there could be any discussion around that, Kim.
So I guess I'm going to ask the will of the board. We are going to have, we have a motion, obviously, because we need to vote on our budget tonight. Do we want to save those conversations for when the motion is, or do we, do we want to see? Do we want to, do we want Susan to kind of give the walk, walkthrough about where we've been? Where, where do people land?
I would like the walkthrough so that when we get to our part, we can just, you know, pass the budget or not pass the budget.
Dean?
I would like to walk through, not for us, because we've been through it, but for members of the public that are tuning in and, and, uh, we're trying to figure out where we're coming from.
Right.
And I think one of the best charts that, um, was developed was, um, the attachment that we really took time with last week um, around the original superintendent's budget. Um, which, the original, original was at 3.1 based on contractual and mostly teacher contract and steps. But on the 14th of January, um, there was a 1.07 budget. And, and then by February, it was a 1.1 with some additions. So if, um, Ken, do you have that document that we cleaned up to include Department of Defense at the end?
I do.
Okay.
I will share it. There we go. Can we see that?
Yep.
Okay, good.
So at the beginning of 2021, the superintendent budget was at $78,268,081, which was a 1.07% increase or an increase from the year before of $829,991. We had some, a lot of discussion, and we, we developed another chart that looked at the retirements and what possible deductions we could have by having some of our, um, you know, seasoned teachers who were at the top of the pay scale retire and then, um, you know, replace them with more junior teachers. And so that's that $94,890. Um, and then we talked about the secondary campus needs in that both the middle school and the high school, being an international baccalaureate, campus had some needs around an athletic director. To have a third, um, assistant principal rather than a dean. And then to increase a tutor and Apex to be a certified teacher. And those all kind of went hand in hand, and they allowed for, um, one of the assistant principals to actually oversee six through 12 counseling, which is working on schedules and making sure counselors have all the updated information and can really inform our kids along the way of all the opportunities that they have in Groton Public Schools. So that secondary campus need was about $63,220. And then the elementary school, after working through this with the, um, with our Board of Ed, we were. with our Board of Ed, we were finding efficiencies with the closing of the three schools into two, but recognizing that those two schools were very big schools, the school at the Cutler Site, the Mystic River Magnet and the school at the West Side Site, the Thames River Magnet. Our schools, they're going to be our biggest schools with 604 students. So we haven't lost students, but we did have some efficiencies with staffing, including one of the elementary principals. When we tried to cut back on the library media, it was suggested that we keep that person in to help with the library, but it also helped with literacy. And we figured out that that role could actually be taken care of through the CARES Act for at least the next couple of years. And, you know, there were a couple other, the magnet themed coach or tutor for the the three new elementary magnet schools, including Charles Barnum, was an addition. So that was at the tune for the elementary needs at 63,711. So that's what brought us up to the 1.11 increase. After that, we actually went through the budget again with a fine tooth comb. And, you know, basically the central office department and then working with the principals. And so with the CARES Act two, which is going to be in in the amount of $3 million, we're actually the, we're waiting for the ESER two application to fill in. But things like social work, anything related to remote learning, so hence the software, summer programming, summer school, summer camps. And so we were able to remove some items that were in the budget or would have been in the budget this year. They had been in CARES Act one. We didn't know about CARES Act two, so we're able to extend them through CARES Act two. So there were some deductions there. There we looked at the travel for workshops. We really don't feel like there's going to be a lot of travel anyway yet. And we've learned that we've been able to do a lot of professional development remotely. Our teachers have taken advantage of national literacy conferences. We have a national math conference coming up. We have school psych meeting and social work. So really, we've had more participation in these national conferences because of the, you know, the compacted time essence and also the availability and the not having to pay for the extra travel cost. So we also saw efficiencies with diesel fuel. We're able to move some IT infrastructure to DOD supplemental impact aid. And then looking in the future at what had happened last year when the middle school opened and really gaining back some of those students of ours who live in Groton, who are attending some of the magnet schools in New London and learn. And we we found a cost savings of 100, about 100,000. And so we're very hopeful that that same thing will happen with the elementary schools. And then there's electricity and natural gas, assuming that the town will take that two of the three schools early on. So those efficiencies, I guess, Ken, if you can move the screen up so I can see that. So those efficiencies brought us down to a point 40 increase. And then, you know, the next step was how can we get to zero? What would we have to do? Originally, we thought about dipping in more to the whole savings reserve, but I think we're all very cautious of that. And the recommendation by Jay Whiteloff was, can we look at the Department of Defense supplemental impact aid, which was very healthy, and look for future technology costs? And we did that. So we were able to to do that at the tune of 324,436. And we, in the same way, we were able to add, based on the board's recommendation, a diversity, equity, and inclusion, a stipend, professional learning and materials at $15,761. Based on some of the work we've done this year, we were able to put those numbers as an estimate. So that brings us to a budget number that was the same as last year, 77,438,90. And that's 0% increase from the year before. And I feel like it really is a good, solid budget. It gives us a lot of opportunities with the Groton 2020 Plan moving forward. And so it's moving from the superintendent's budget now to the Board of Education's budget. You want to stop sharing or does anybody have any questions while we're on this page?
I am so glad that eight heads are better than mine, and I'm really glad that you went through it because it does help remind us about sort of how we got to where we were. So my hat's off to my colleagues on that. Thank you. All right. And so one of the things that when Susan and I were developing up, developing the agenda, we were really kind of taking a look at how we sort of need to be so much in the present in terms of reopening our schools and all of those discussions and also our budget. But that also there's other things that are also going on because we're going to be opening up two elementary schools. And and I just, I just thought that it was important that we started to put that into our our hemisphere about thinking. And so Susan, I was hoping that you would talk a little bit about that.
Okay, so the next thing on our list is to talk about those elementary magnet schools. And I just sent out a message to families of elementary children and preschool children that talked about the exciting time here in Groton, that Groton 2020 is just continuing with the opening of those two magnet schools and the Mystic River Magnet, which will be really an ingenuity in play magnet school with discovery and inquiry. And then the Thames River Academy, which will be marine life science, environmental science, really another STEM kind of school. So I'm very excited about that. We'll have, we have a whole website that we've launched, so I really recommend if families are listening to get on the website. It's got just enormous amount of information. Thanks to Rebecca Bayes, who's worked so hard on it, and also Tom Lonsdale, our new student data manager. So we are also sending out a survey. We thought if we could collect some information ahead of time, even prior to the lottery, we would see what families were thinking about. We're going to be sending out invitations to the students who are magnet students across the river and hoping that some of them will decide to to come to their schools. So this always the Groton 2020 Plan was to to balance our schools, to make them have more equity, excellence, and efficiencies. And so that was always the Groton 2020 Plan with the building of the Groton Middle School, having this international baccalaureate campus with Fitch and Groton Middle School. And then to have five magnet schools. So we already have two with Northeast Academy and CK. Charles Barnum will be the Discovery Magnet School and Seth Danner, Principal Danner, has been working with colleagues of mine that I've worked with before, Joe Ranzilli and Sally Reese from UConn, and looking at a school-wide enrichment program that we're very excited about. So teachers are excited, principals are excited. I think families will be excited about this. And we're going to be gathering information now and and then we'll have a new online registration and lottery process that families will be hearing more about. There's actually a place on the website that if you don't know where your neighboring school is, because you're either at Mary Morrison, your child is currently at Mary Morrison or at Clodchester or at SB Butler, you can go on to this map and find out what is going to be considered your neighborhood school in, you know, for next year. And then you'll get to see where are the, what are some of the other choices that you might have? So I think, I think that's, you know, part of the wonderful thing that we are doing in Groton. So any questions about that? And then the final.
I'm sorry. So can you give us a timeline of what you anticipate to be able to announce where kids will be going next year after the, when the lottery is going to take place and and when parents will be notified?
So the lottery will start to take place by the end of March. They'll have a survey this next week coming up that they'll participate in, and we're really encouraging families to participate in that. It's going to give us a lot of information. And the lottery is a brand new process, a brand new online software that we've purchased. So we'll be rolling that out in the month of March, probably by mid-March, third week in March. Lottery will probably continue for over a month, so into April. And we'll have a lottery drawing. We always save seats out there because we are a military community and we have students enrolling all through the year and then in the summertime. So we'll want to make sure that they have their seats in the schools to do another lottery in the summertime and before school starts.
So will people realize where their kids are going to be going before the end of the school year?
Most of them will, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, registered, they'll know. By the time the lottery is is drawn, and some people may just want to stay in their neighboring school and might not participate in the lottery, and that's fine, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
So if I if I was a, you know what, this probably would be a really good thing to bring back to the committee, the whole, because I want to talk about, we probably we should be talking about just the lottery system, but also just to make sure that we are getting the diversity that we need and the bodies to fill those two those two new buildings.
The one thing we know because of the Malone and McBroom report, that the students who are earmarked to go to the schools, we found that the balance is really very good. It's really mirrors the the balance in our community. So we already do know that based on who's in the seats currently. So we will pay attention to that to make sure that that continues. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's good. It's all good.
All right.
All right, so, um.
I have one more thing.
Yes, please.
Hiring of assistant superintendent. I love both jobs. Don't get me wrong. And I'm trying my best to do them both well. But I would say that we we've been involved in a process of over the past four weeks that has done a first round of interviews, has done a really careful look at the talent pool. There were at in the beginning about 20 very viable candidates, you know, and and out of that, there were 12 outstanding candidates, maybe 13 that came in for first round interviews. And we had some internal candidates, but we had a lot of external candidates as well. So with a rubric and a design process through the HR department, we were able to find out who was coming back for second rounds and for the professional tasks that we'll have them do. And so that's going to happen next week. It's going to take us a couple days, a couple afternoons. And and then we'll have a final round. And the idea is to send two or three, not just to me, but I'll have a team of about four of us in the final rounds. So, you know, I I feel like our own committee has worked so hard on this. We've had representation from across the district. We've had paraprofessionals and teachers. You know, we've had board member and, you know, union representation. So I and we had over 17, 18 people on the committee. So when you came in a Zoom room for your first round, it was pretty daunting. And people did really recognize the diversity of the interview committee. So I was appreciative of that. So looking forward to it, and I will just keep you, continue to keep you posted and hope to bring you a candidate before the end of March for you to meet.
That'd be great. Lee, do you have a question? You're muted. Lee, you're muted.
Not now. When you, Susan, when you say we, this is actually a job of the superintendent to find an assistant superintendent. So when when you say we have done this, I'm just curious, there was a board member on that also? I don't know who the we are.
So it's 17 members of our school community. We went through, you know, we go through this process. This is part of our HR process. When I was hired, I came into a room of probably 15 people. So it wasn't just Dr. Grenier. It was an entire committee and and Rita was there. So it was.
Okay, yeah.
And Jane is on this committee. So, you know, we're following really the very same protocol. But the final decision, I'm going to have about three others with me in deciding. And ultimately, it is my decision, but I really respect my colleagues and their input.
Okay.
And so I'm appreciative of their.
For many of us, this will be, it was a first new superintendency. So for many of us, it's a first assistant superintendent.
True. That's true. Yeah.
Good question, Lee.
Yep.
All right. So if there's no further questions to Susan, I'm going to move us on to our business manager.
Hello.
Hello, Guy.
Hi. So attachment number one was our, is our object code summary. And this shows that on a budget of 77,438,090, we anticipate at this point to land at 77,177,933, which is a projected unexpended balance of 260,157. Very similar to to last month's report. You know, we we've had some 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 savings in the salaries area offset by some additional costs under supplies and with transportation. But we are anticipating around $260,000 unexpended at the end of the year at this point.
Any other questions about our objects code summary?
Can can I ask Ken if that extra money, the $260,000, if that could go towards summer school?
Yeah, we certainly could do, although summer school is next fiscal year, so.
Well, I'm hoping it just sort of continues in June.
Oh, yeah, sure. If it happened in June, you're right. It certainly could use.
I think, though, the CARES Act would be a good way to support that. One of the things we had talked about is maybe really being fiscally responsible and putting any funds towards OPEB or even the Health Savings Reserve. So we'll we'll keep you abreast of that and have you help us make that decision.
Thanks.
But that 260 is just what we have for right now. It's most likely going to be lower by the end of, by the end of our fiscal year.
Yeah.
Ken, just a point of clarification. I just need a quick one. This is this year's budget that we're operating under right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I know it could be confusing.
It's just that.
Look alike.
Yeah, it does. It kind of runs together. And then, because I was looking at the on two dash six, which is the backside of the of all the object codes, it's the summary. Now, I I'm I'm confused. There's a reason I was a social studies teacher for 30 years and numbers are not my friend. So please bear with me, okay? So 260,157 on the end of page two dash five is the same number at the end of two dash six, correct? But this says it's unexpended, and that means there's it's under, correct?
Correct.
Then why is it on this side it seems to be an increase? Do you see? Because on the other side says increase is not in parentheses. And so I'm confused.
So increase doesn't have parentheses. So increase, increase. What does that increase mean?
Because at the bottom of the grand total, you see.
It's a good point. I I'll have to look at that. I'm not too sure. I spent a lot of time looking at that, at that, at that top. So you you might have a very valid point. But it is, it is meant to that we're under budget.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you're going to tell us whether we're under budget or over budget?
We are under budget.
We are under budget.
So that should really be in parentheses.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I I I'm going to look at it and I'll adjust it appropriately for the next, for the next report. But I think maybe the heading should change, to be honest, but.
Okay, because underneath it says point 0.34%.
Yep.
And what does that mean?
That just means that's the percentage from the from the original budget. So so what it's saying is we are under budget by 0.34%.
Okay.
You know what's confusing? Attachment one. If you look in the last column, under. If you look in the last column, under slash over is in parentheses.
Right, right.
When you get to the back, it's opposite.
Increase. It says decrease, different words, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that has to be adjusted.
Right.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I appreciate you pointing out.
See, that's special for people like me. That's what that's what happens when you have a whole bunch of people. I will own what Liz owns, which is not very good in in numbers. Um, that we are going to look at that and we're going to try to understand it. And that's what happens. But if there's no further comment, let's move on to the insurance report.
Oh, Kim, I do.
Oh, Dean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've I've had a question. Um, I'm, this is not the first time that we've gotten this, and so it's 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 me. It's 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 not you. Uh, but I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, okay. Uh, under benefits, the largest single overage, if you will, is um. Now I've lost it because we got so engrossed in the other one. Is under benefits, I think it was uh, retirement awards. I'm looking at page two dash two near the bottom.
Yep.
Line ninety-one, I believe. So we had budgeted. Wait, wait, wait. Yes, we had budgeted sixteen hundred dollars and change.
That's right.
And we wound up expending ninety-seven thousand. Could you just? Explain that? I know you've I know you've done it once. I just don't remember it.
Yeah, uh, so uh, retirement awards are are paid to uh, whether it's a teacher or a parent that has is um, retiring. Uh, last year, we uh, we we paid for um. The teachers that retired in FY twenty, we paid those severances, or I'm sorry, those retirement awards out in. In FY twenty itself. And so uh, we made that adjustment to the budget last year. Uh, that's why it's only sixteen fifty-seven. Uh, throughout the year, we did get additional retirements, whether it was parents, uh, I think it was mostly parents that uh. And we anticipate uh, paying for retirements for this year's uh, re- um. Uh, retirees as well. And so that's what that's what that represented by that ninety-seven thousand.
Okay, so is this normally ordinarily a predictable kind of an item where? You can budget for the item and then usually you can expect that the actual number will be close to the budget figure?
Yes, yeah. Um, but what we what we've done is we've we've tried to um, uh, pay for these uh, in the current year. Um, uh, if there's any additional funding. Uh, just to 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 ma- make sure we have enough funds to to pay for those. Uh, so, yeah, it it usually we we do uh, have a number there. We we stick pretty close to it. With the exception of retirements that come up that we're not aware of the the year before. And that would be uh, parents, I think that mostly that occurs with.
Right, so so next year, we don't expect the same phenomenon.
Well, so next year, we we have uh, identified the three teachers uh, that uh, we are going to pay for the retirements out of this year. Uh, so we would expect no uh, retirement awards next year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. With every question, I learned something, so I appreciate that. Can we move on to the insurance?
So the uh, health uh, health insurance claims report, attachment number two. Uh, shows that for December of twenty. Uh, the claims are starting to are starting to come back a little bit. Um, they're at ninety-three percent of of ninety-three and a half percent of budget. Um, and seventy-five percent year to date. So so the trend has been that the claims are. Uh, are getting um, are coming back to where we anticipated them to be. Uh, our monthly budget is a little over a million dollars. Uh, and in December, uh, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six fifty-two. Uh, so still under budget a little bit, but um, we anticipate this. We anticipate this actually at some point to go over budget for some of these months. Uh, as any of these postponed um, uh, procedures and and other avoidances that were hap- that happened at the beginning of the year. Uh, start to come to fruition in the latter half of this fiscal year. Um, so this this is expected and um, I thi- I think it's good. I think it's good news.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Ken. And also thank you for being such a good partner with us on the past um, eight weeks. Um, you have a. It is a. Thank you very, very, very much for your hard work and um, getting us all the information that we have requested. So I do appreciate. The work that you put in for the board during the budget time and also for the district. Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next agenda item is Mr. Kilpatrick.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So I have a couple items to to report on tonight. I think I I'm going to skip to the second item. Uh, the completion of the Groton Middle School first and um, we have a letter from the uh. Uh, chairman of the uh, building committee, uh, Robert Austin LaFrance. Um, and the committee has uh, voted to accept the building as complete. And I think Rick might want to speak briefly on that at this point.
Thank, thank you, Sam. As that, as uh, Susan, I believe, is is passed that letter from the permanent school building committee chair to everyone. Um, we're a little kind of unique community where uh, you know, town bill's a building, the permanent school building committee is involved, plus. You folks, so it's really a kind of a three-legged stool, if you will, that gets these buildings completed and meets the requirements. We did uh, uh, the permanent school building committee did go over the items with me. We at Public Works has writ- written a letter to the. The school committee, you know, citing several things that were remaining work. And I can uh, read those to you real quickly. Uh, one of them is the installation of the middle school sign at the bottom of the hill. One's the replacement of classroom entry door locks. Um, to that point, Sam has worked with us to and we've worked with the principal of not only the middle school, but the two elementary schools. To ensure that the locks were satisfactory, met their safety requirements, and they were consistent through the three schools. Which is important for us and of course, Sam for maintenance. The other item that's out there is really a certificate of site plan compliance. We have a a conditional right now. There's several areas that have to be completed in the spring before the end of June. Which are reseeding the areas where the grass hasn't been established. You know, it was too late in the season. Evaluate the trees that may or may not uh, have survived the winter that need to be replanted. And there's a temporary sediment trap by the ball field. It's a pond looking thing that needs to be. Regraded. So those are the three major. Items, if you will, of or actually just five, three and a couple sub items, but the uh. And some punchless stuff needs to be completed. And none of the punchless items are significant at this point, affect the operation of the school or the ability to hold classes. As required, so we're still working through a few of those. Some of them maybe. Uh, some painting touch-ups or replacement of a few tiles, some uh. You know, uh, I guess uh, fixing the school letters a little bit that are on the side of the building and get the spacing proper, you know, it's they're all. They're all sort of minor work things. And there's about twenty-five probably uncompleted on on the list. That we're working with the uh. With the principal and the vice principal for access to the building to make sure we don't interfere with the educational process. So having said that, we went to the uh, permanent school building committee, let them know where we stood. They uh, again, uh, had written a letter. To the superintendent, which she believed passed on to you. We listed in that letter for the permanent school building committee, a number of the upgrades. We were fortunate that the bids came in under uh. Under what our budget was. Our budget for the project was seventy million dollars for construction. We're at about sixty-nine million, five hundred thousand at this point with a couple items left to complete. But having done that, we were able to not only take an alternate of the plans for seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the turf field. But also add three hundred thousand dollars to that. To get the turf field that we now have. So we were able to uh, spend our money. There was an additional sky full door that we put. Uh, in the music room, in the music room, between the music room and the cafeteria. That was a quarter of a million dollar cost. So we worked hard with Sam and Susan got involved a little bit, but mostly Mike. Uh, previously to add those items that we could that could enhance. The building use and the education. One of them was the eighty-five inch Peramedian boards, for example. Moving up from seventy-five inches, or I think they're eighty-six, whatever. But um, so my report is basically that we believe the building is suitable. For continue, you should be turned over to the Board of Education. If you choose to accept it. And I would be happy to answer any questions. I think it's a great uh, moment for us all on this project. And I I I'm sure the the board and Groton Public Schools get many years of use out of this building.
Dan, before I ask questions from the board, do you have anything else that you would like to say about that? Like, are we ready to take it?
Well, yeah, yeah, just in addition to the uh, the springtime work, meaning uh, trees that need to be repla- uh, taken out and replanted, maybe in grass. That that sort of thing that can't be done until the spring. And the punch list that Rick mentioned. Uh, the the only other things uh, that may come up would be warranty work, and that would be our responsibility anyway, so. Uh, there are very minor issues that uh, need to be completed. They're all on that list and they're all being taken care of in a timely manner, so.
Yeah, this this deals mainly with the uh, facility, not so much the budget, which we expect to be closed out by the end of uh. May. And be able to come back to the board and ask that you allow the superintendent to sign the oh forty-nine F, which is the final. Right now, we're currently about six million dollars under budget. So um, with with Sam's help and the help, my help from Arcadas and that sort of thing. And and the construction manager. They did a tremendous job of keeping the price down, if you will. Without uh, sacrificing the quality of the building. I know so many of you walked through there. I continue to co- get comments from people that haven't been in there before, even the uh. The uh, project managers from other projects come walk through the building and they say, hey, this building's tremendous, and it and I believe it is. So we would continue to work on the finances. Like I said, we're in really good shape. Um, trying to close that out and uh. That's we, one one thing I should mention, too, is another thing we're able to afford is increasing the warranty on the roof. From twenty to thirty years, which was huge, too, for these kind of buildings. So. So that makes it easy for Sam during his tenure there, I'm sure, if you so. He may not be around when the roof needs to be replaced at that point. So yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I will open it up to for the board, um, if they have questions for either Rick or for Sam. Just reminding the board that we um, we do have a motion later on uh, in the evening um, to take. To take the Groton Middle School.
I have a question for Rick. Does it um? If when we if we accept this, when does the reimbursement from the state come into play? Does it have to then? Does it have to be after we accept it?
Yes, it does. We, yeah, the building has to have been accepted. That process is the building will have have to have been accepted by the Board of Ed. Um, the finance records will be closed, the EDO forty-nine uh, F final will be. Will be uh, signed by the superintendent and the construction manager and sent off to the state. That starts the uh, process for the audit. We would request an audit at that time. The reimbursement would not occur until after the audit's complete. Right now, uh, OSCGR really kind of uh. Really beat up the communities pretty badly because previously the retention was was uh, five percent. They increased it to eleven percent. So they're holding, you know, ten million dollars that should be coming back to the town and the audit could take up to two years. So we'll be working hard and Arcadas has some inroads and they, if we can get the building. When we get the building closed out in June and the records, they think they could processably get us into the audit by the end of the year, which would be tremendous.
Right.
So that's kind of how the how the money flows, if you will.
Thank you.
Jay, I saw you raise your hand. And then Dean.
Um, yeah, so much a question, but I just I just want to thank. Uh, Rick and the Permanent School Board, uh, School Building Committee. I mean, they they work tirelessly. A year round uh, in meetings that uh. Um, have determined. Both the middle school and and he's got two elementary schools going at the same time. I mean, it's just, it's really an amazing. Amount of work being done all at the same time. And uh, to then commit under budget. I mean, you know, we're we're used to everything going over budget. Um, and I've been through that school. It it is amazing. And um, we just owe them a great deal of uh, gratitude for um. You know, what they've done for our district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dean.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Rick. Um. The question I have is the the timing of. Uh, when it comes to reimbursement from the state, you laid that out.
Yep.
The fact that we have retention, uh, retainer out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Can you say it's eleven percent? So currently the subcontractors, for example, are waiting on their last eleven percent?
Um, no, retainage, um, and we we only required five percent. Which is all that's typically required for construction contractors. There, when they complete their work and completed the turn in of their documents, their warranties, or this, that, the other thing. We can reduce the retainage, which we have in several occasions already. And then ultimately, uh, we'll take their retainage to zero percent. Arcade, uh, ONG, that's uh, comes in as part of their requisition, if you will, when we get to the final state change order. Um, ONG, we hold until the end. And typically, when we close out the records, all the retainage has been returned, except the state's retainage to us. You know, so that's. That makes it a little bit difficult on the communities because they're holding so much money, if you will.
I guess my 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 ultimate question is, is there going to be a period of time where? Uh, Groton is going to have to, if you will, front a uh, an enormous sum of money. And then turn around as part of the process and get reimbursed by the state.
Uh, yes, we're 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 submitting, uh, you know, for a reimbursements monthly, which we can do. So we get. Say if it's a forty-seven per forty-seven and a half percent is the uh. What we're allowed for reimbursement on the middle school. We're getting about thirty-seven percent right now back. So that other, you know, ten, eleven percent will will not be returned till after that, so. We we have it in the bonds, whether we need to do that or not. For example, if we're saving six million dollars. Do we need to, do we need to bond that money? So actually, that's money returned or not spent by the town. It doesn't have to be bonded, so we wouldn't have those interest costs. That kind of helps us on the far end for all us. Unfortunately, I'm a numbers person, so if you have questions, please ask about the numbers. But uh, that sort of ameliacs that a little bit, if you will. If we came in exactly on the budget, then we'd be strapped with that full eleven percent. But we're probably, you know, not the whole eleven percent behind because we do have uh. Some money that was unspent under the bonds, if you will.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, where would we be drawing this money that we would be, as I said, fronting?
Right now, we've uh. They've they purchased what they call bond anticipation notes, if you will, during the construction process.
The bands, yeah.
Yeah, the bands. So then, when and Sal, our previous finance director, was really great at this. On the last project, because he he look at the bands, he look at when the proper time is to bond, they may put two or three projects together that require. Bonding, get the best interest rate and bond that money then. So ultimately, we'd have to pay off the bands with with bonded funds, you know, because interest rate is is less. But we still have some money that the town town has spent outright, if you will, from the bond that hadn't been reimbursed to us. So we may have, you know, we may have six, seven million dollars that's bonded. That when we get reimbursement, we could either pay off that bond or, you know, whatever the finance department decides to do in that particular case.
Right.
At that point, I'm. I think I'm out of it, but that's okay.
But this this procedure, you know, where where the trapeze artists are, this has all been anticipated from the beginning of the project.
That's correct. Yeah, finance department has been in lockstep with us all along the way. In fact, they're required to. To sign and review all the state change orders to make sure that funding is available to pay those change orders and that and that sort of thing, so. Yes, we've been in communications the whole time with the finance folks and they're on board with that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions about the Groton Middle School? All right, if I'm if there are no more, Sam, please.
Yeah, let me continue on. I'll go back up to the first item, which is the Groton Middle School field lighting. Susan and I will be attending a town council meeting tomorrow night to discuss with the town council that exact topic. And then it may, from there, go back to the Finance and Facilities Committee, and maybe the Policy Committee to determine exactly what we can do and how we can do it. There's a concern regarding whether we can charge for the use of that field or the lighting or or both, but that those questions will all be answered in the near future.
See, can I just adjust that? We've already said that there will be no charging for the middle school lights. I think what we wanted to do is to look at the fee structure in that policy and update it. Ken says we probably should be looking at that every every year annually anyway. And so really, it's the facilities and finance committee that will take a look at that. The there's nothing wrong with the policy. It's, you know, it doesn't specify that. It's in the regulations with the fee structure. So that will be looked at, but we have made that promise that we won't charge it. That's the only way we could get this to happen.
Yep, through the bonds.
Right.
We do, as part of the project, I might add that we have put conduits in the ground and handles and whatever to try and pre-pipe that project, if you will, so we could spend some money that we had out of the project to do that. So when it comes to the the bottom line, it may be less expensive to put those that feel lighting in, even though we couldn't get it into the project based on the state's requirements. So I did tell Sam and Susan, of course, that I'd help you folks however I could
Thank you.
Get through that process, if you will.
Well, I know the community would be thrilled because that's really gonna give us more access on those turf fields. Like any of our fields, people have to, you know, basically fill out a usage form and provide, you know, any insurances so that the town's not liable, but we we certainly have that structure in place in our business office, so.
And one thing I should make you all aware of, if you haven't thought about it, that that field doesn't last forever. There, we're told it lasts ten to twelve years. Of course, the more use it gets, the less it lasts. So at some point down the road, we're gonna need, as the town, put put away three, four, five hundred thousand dollars just to place, replace the carpet on top. The way it was constructed, there's a a pad, not really a pad, but a a substructure underneath, surprise some of the string, some of the spring in the field. But what that allows us to do is simply roll up the old carpet, put the new carpet down without having to go to the subgrade and that sort of stuff. That will save some money, but still, you just have to keep in the back of your mind that at some point, there's going to be an additional cost to replace that that rug, if you will.
Right. And again, that's one of the items that was upgraded by the the by you and the permanent school building. That pad underneath, which also directs the water to the drainage and also gives a better cushion to the carpet.
Yep.
And those lights would be financially supported by the funds that were left over from the Groton Middle School. Isn't that right, Rick?
Well, that's what that's what the intent was. I mean, we've been back and forth, the bonding attorney several times, which is why I think the point came up that we couldn't charge for the field because it was built or for lights or the field because it was built with non-tax dollars or tax-free dollars, if you will. So it has to meet all those financial rules, unfortunately. But it's a it's it's an interesting process. I know it's it's not that easy to maneuver, but I'm sure we'll be able to get through it.
Thank you, Rick.
Sure.
And of course, the
Wait, wait.
Before you get back there, I had a question for Ken. Our high school football field with the lights, it is not a turf field. I was just curious, has that been rented in the past? And have we received any income for for other, you know, agencies that wanted to come and use that field with lights?
Yeah, we we have had some instances where folks have used the field. We haven't gone back to to quantify how many or how much, but we're gonna do that in conjunction with this, so we understand.
Thank you.
Sam, continue.
So I have a couple of questions. So reading the pamphlets that were coming in, there's a lot of talk about lack of P P E. And I know at my job, I have to provide my own, none has provided for me to ask the lights.
Do you please? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. There are other facilities within the district that people have rented, too. For instance, the auditorium at the high school is is rented by every every spring. So there are some other places that we do get some some payback on some other things that we put in place. The third item is the elementary schools, and I hope that you've all at least driven by there in the last few days because that progress continues to move along on those buildings. I do have a a meeting coming up with Kelly Nelly and Technology. So technology, phone, and cable and fiber, we'll be talking about in that meeting, the final connections of those items. So we're we're getting, we're moving along pretty pretty well on that on those projects.
And we are, and with with Sam, if you, we are working to obtain the larger Proethean boards there, too. I just need to, since it's an out of scope item, I need to get the committee to buy in on that. But it looks like we're we'll be on our way to do that. So you'll have the same size boards in the classrooms that you have at the middle school, which we think is good. We're also looking at at sodding the fields as we did at the softball field and the other multipurpose field at the high school. So it would be, I mean, at middle schools, it'd be available for use sooner, if you will, and irrigation, too, so which will help. Sam, I know a lot, keeping the grass going, right, Sam?
Right, absolutely. Right. And so that's the elementary school progress.
They they are on schedule.
I had a question. I've had questions from the general public about the layout of the school, and I couldn't really explain it. You know how it almost looks like the middle school where there's a separate building in the front and then the taller in the back?
Right.
And I assume that that's the gym and and the offices so that you could close it off to use it so that people don't use the classroom part.
The portion across the road at both schools is the gymnasium, the cafeteria, kitchen, if you will. And then the little connector between the three-story wing, which is the classroom wing on both schools, is the admin, the health suite, those sorts of things. So.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify it. Thank you.
The public spaces are to the front, and of course, we can lock down the rest of the building so that when a public event is going on, they cannot access those, the classroom sections of the buildings.
Yeah. Hopefully, we could have a highlight of that, like in the newspaper or something that 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 explains all that, that shows, you know, the progress. I mean, it's just tremendous. They look great.
Yeah, we do have, Arcadis does have a Facebook page, if you will. I can find out what the that is that shows you all those things.
Yeah, I'm not on Facebook.
Oh, I know. Unfortunately, I was just gonna say, unfortunately, we had our webpage redone, and all my stuff from the school has disappeared. So I'm trying to get that reestablished to get that back on on at least the town's website. So you have that.
So I was gonna suggest, like we did with Groton Middle School, is to have our buildings up and and showcasing them. So I'll talk to Rebecca about that.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Rebecca has sent us some emails. I'll probably hook her up with the people from Arcadis, who has a P R person, too. So because it takes a lot of time for the project manager to send renderings and all that kind of stuff, because she has to find them and send them. But let me talk to the Arcadis management. I know they're doing the one, like I said, the Facebook, where we can, if we can get them connected to you folks, they can provide more information that you can use to to showcase the thing also.
Yep. Great, thanks, Rick. And and the other thing that's going on presently, we're a little ahead of schedule with it, is the move management of the of the teachers and equipment that will be going over to the two new elementary schools from the three elementary schools that will be closing. So Tom Beebe, who is the move manager for Arcadis, has already conducted three or four meetings. And we're already sending boxes over to the schools this week so that teachers can start to pack things up and and get ready for the big move. So that's continuing on.
Great.
If I could just mention two other things, because I I mentioned these to you at at another meeting, but we we did food services on on last Thursday. Even through the snowstorm, we were handing out the bulk of thirteen hundred farm-to-community meals to not not just to students, but it was actually to families. So there was a thirty-three-pound box of of food, which included two different meats. It could have been fish in in some meats and in the other, vegetables, fruits, onions, dairy products. There was milk, yogurt and some. And so we got those out, the bulk of those out on Thursday, and then on Saturday morning, we went down to the library and between nine and eleven on Saturday morning at the library, we actually ran out before the eleven o'clock period, but I think we were done by ten thirty to pass out the remaining of those boxes. So all those went out to the community. And I'm happy to report that as of today, Ernie and I have hooked up to have one more community to our farm-to-community meal program, which will come at the end of March. I I think it's going to be on the thirtieth, but don't quote me on the date yet. We'll we'll update you on that later on. The other thing from food services is the soup and salad fundraiser that's coming up. If you haven't seen it already, it's on the website. Sign up. The the funds for the the fundraising for that, the money for that will be going toward furnishing the the greenhouse for that program. And then, of course, in transportation, we'll be meeting with with Tom in I T, along with TransFinder, somebody from TransFinder on Wednesday, I believe, along with my transportation coordinators, Jenny and Patty, to look at any efficiencies that we can find as we move toward this intra-district magnet program that we're gonna have next year. So we want to get a handle on that as to how many buses it's gonna take, how how well we can run those buses and and where we can find any efficiencies that we may find. So that will be coming up this week, and we report on that later on in the month.
All right, so I'm gonna move us on to the committee reports, policy.
Did not meet in February. We are meeting on Monday coming, which I think is the first of March.
Yeah, it is.
We'll be there.
All right, curriculum, that would be Jane. And I need to be unmuted.
That's good, because the phone was ringing. I'm sorry, I did not attend a curriculum meeting.
I think we really all were focused on the budget workshops, so we didn't have those.
Just making just making sure. So Jane, as the curriculum chair, when will you guys be meeting?
I have not spoken to Susan or anyone yet about being curriculum chair, so we need to regroup on that.
All right. So finance and facility.
Yes, since all of our meetings every week have basically been around finance, so we have not met either. But I anticipate we'll meet in March.
Or you've met a lot, just with with the other group of us. Rita, Learn?
Learn, we have met. I have met quite a bit with Learn because I'm also on the Building Committee for the Ocean Avenue Learning Academy Second Floor Project. We have the pleasure of having, for the superintendent's perspective, Fran Rebinewicz, who is the executive director of CAPS. She presented CAPS blueprint to transform Connecticut's public schools, which I know that Mrs. Austin has shared with the board. And it's a fifteen-year plan, and the amazing thing about this plan is that it does not have a decrease at all to funding for all the different towns in the in Connecticut. Whether or not the governor and the legislator will accept this is, you know, yet to be seen, but because in his recent budget, Governor Lamont did have a reduction in the education cost sharing funding. So I'm hoping that, you know, maybe with a lot of support from the teachers' union, from people in all the different towns, that they will accept this blueprint that CAPS developed. We also, there's a really interesting project going on at Marine Science, which I know we have a lot of our Groton students are involved with. They are growing coral there now, along with fish. And we had to, they're going to be selling the coral, and it's quite profitable, and the funds will go back into growing more coral. And there are so many different, whether it's aquariums or whatever, that want to purchase this coral. So we had to do a special funding for that. Also, let's see, we had Sarah Moon, who is the Learns Director of Related Services, is now working with the State Department of Aging and Disabilities, and she's developing a training curriculum for adults with disabilities to increase to increase their ability to work, which I thought was fascinating. And we also had a report from Carol Glenn, who was the Director of Young Children and Families for Learn. Then there was a large discussion afterwards about all the districts, their plans for going back to school full-time. We heard from Eastline, and also, we had a discussion, and a future discussion will be on how we we are going to help students with learning loss and an extended school year. So that was it.
Thank you, Rita. And so our town council, our team and Board of Ed liaison meeting was really all of us getting together, and we participated in that, and that was our joint meeting about our budget, where people were able to ask questions for us. And then, gosh, was it last week or maybe two weeks ago? The H E S A, the G E A and the Board of Ed met. Once again, really kind of going over sort of Wednesday, actually, what we do on Wednesdays, and also sort of opening of schools on vaccinations and such. So I believe, I don't need to be cutting things out, but that's that sort of seems to be the theme of that, what we've, what we've been working on. Groton Scholarship, Lee?
Yes, we met last Wednesday or Thursday on Zoom, of course. The the applications for scholarships are in. There are now going to be three readers, I am not one of them, who will read all of the applications, the essays and everything else. It's a big job. And we will meet again. I would say, I'm not sure we're gonna meet in March because that's when we're actually going to be reading all the applications. We will begin to meet again in April.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
A nice group.
Good, I'm glad. And athletic fields, Jay, I believe?
Yes. So they met last Thursday. I was unable to attend, but they have published a website which displays the plan for the the athletic fields. You know, the proposal that the town council had requested that they come up with. I I can email all of you the the website. Unfortunately, it's nothing that can be easily said. You can find your way to it through the Parks and Web, Parks and Rec website, but I'll give you the the direct page. The town council has requested that the committee basically remain standing, even though it's already presented its its plan to the council. I don't know how many of you were able to watch that. They are offering to come and do it all over again for the board, or you can just watch it on YouTube. So it's up to you. But basically, it's to get a coordinated plan for But basically, it's to get a coordinated plan for what are the actual needs for fields across the town, both with Parks and Rec and the schools, and try to come up with a coordinated plan.
So Jay, Jerry has been reaching out to me, but I asked him for us to wait until we voted on the budget to at least got to get the heavy lifting for us done. And so he actually contacted me today. And so I'm going to be talking to Susan about actually putting it on the Committee of the Whole for him to come in. And hopefully, that would be March eighth. I know Susan and I, we have lots of things that we want to talk about at the Committee of the Whole, but I think it's important that we get this in. So that the board, I think that they, I think all board, I would much rather have him come in and and talk to us. I'm taking responsibility. We should have probably been at the town council presentation, but wires got crossed around that. I'm taking responsibility for that communication lack. But I want him to come in and so that the Board of Ed can hear sort of what the plan is and what they're thinking, so that we can kind of ask our questions and then also get behind the work that you guys did as a field committee.
Yeah, they did an excellent job with this presentation. It's very comprehensive. And so you can preview it on the website and then, you know, we can ask questions when they come in.
Thank you, thank you, Jay. All right, so I'm moving us to the consent agenda. And so these are all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. And then we'll ask for point of clarification. So I will take a motion for, I will take a motion for the consent agenda. I got Lee, can I have a second, please?
Second.
I got Jane. And then, is there any discussion about anything that's on the consent agenda, Liz?
Yeah, just point of clarification. For number five, the attachment seven, February seventh. I don't, I might be wrong, but I thought it was, it says down there under towards the bottom of the page, where it says Mr. Whiteloff requested the update on OPEP. That, see that listing there? I thought it was me that requested the data on keeping the secretary slated to be cut. Jane was, I didn't think it was you, or did you support that? Was that you or was that me or? It wasn't you.
Right, so.
So it was me.
So Joan, can we make that correction on that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
With that, with that correction, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, the motion has carried. The Board of Education would like to say thank you to Exa Mobile Corporation. Has made a donation of $500 to Charles Barnum Elementary School to be used for the maintenance and support of the math and science programs. So we do say thank you to that. And then there's no old business that actually probably would be where the policy is. But I think, Lee, that that is a policy we want to bring back to the Committee of the Whole to talk about the social emotional learning piece. And so then we're going to get that on. And I think that that's also going to be on the eighth. Okay, just want to make sure. I'm going to ask whether we can move our number two for the new new business, so that Rick does not have to be here. We've had the conversation and then go to our first one, which is the 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 ending of our lots of time that we have spent together budget. So are people in favor of doing that? I just need to have most of us say yes. Okay, so. Jay, would you be willing to read the motion for number two, please?
Yes, I move to accept the Grotton Middle School Project as complete.
Second.
I've got a second from Liz. Is there any further discussion or questions that we have for Rick or Sam? All right, that's great. I mean, not that it's great that we don't have a discussion. I'm just, I shouldn't be doing the war who after we vote. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, which is to accept the Grotton Middle School Project as complete, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain, the motion has carried. Now, all right, oh, my goodness, yay, yay, yay.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the board for all your support, Sam, pretty in particular along during that process. It was time consuming. We'll have a couple more for you toward the end of the summer, hopefully before school starts, so we can get those turned over to you. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
And I appreciate the support during that project. It's a tremendous site. It's probably going to be the jewel of the Grotton schools, I hope.
It's just amazing.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Night.
Rita, would you be willing to read the motion? And I'm wondering if we.
I actually have an updated motion for you. Because when we, are you talking about the budget?
Yes.
Because this was, we did not have a number on this, because we were going to be discussing that on February seventeenth at the COW. So Joyce actually put together a motion that would say to approve the FY twenty twenty twenty-two budget in the amount of seventy-seven million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, ninety dollars, which is zero percent increase from the current budget.
Can you do that by, you know, by memory there, Rita?
No. What I was going to ask too was, why wasn't the February seventeenth Committee of the Whole meeting approved in our consent calendar? I was just curious about that. I mean, it seems like we missed one.
It wasn't a COW, was it? Wasn't it just a budget workshop?
Whatever it was, we approved all the other budget workshops.
There were also.
Special meetings, and we didn't approve that one. So it's in the future we need to do. But Susan, if you you can just say that and I can just say so moved and somebody could second it. Okay, if you want to, if you'd like to repeat it.
That's a great, that's a good idea.
The motion is to approve the FY twenty-two budget in the amount of seventy-seven million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, ninety dollars, which is a zero percent increase over the current budget.
Rita, are you so moved? All right, can I have a second, please? I got Rosemary. Is there any discussion?
No more. I mean, I still have have my questions about, that haven't been answered yet. Additional information from the high school about the dean's position moving to the vice principal that I had requested as, see, and there was the other one too about the vice principal overseeing the six through twelve middle school position there. And I had asked, you know, what about the head of guidance taking over that? Instead of losing our vice principal to that. But, you know, so I just have a couple more questions. I'm fine with the athletic director, six through twelve, and I'm thrilled with the zero percent increase. But in the future, I would like to have a little more clarification about those two positions, because we would be voting for them in this budget.
Is that something you would like to bring back to the COW? About how that structure of the campus is going to look?
Yes.
Okay.
Very much so.
Right. I think that would be good to have a discussion and really to bring both principals, Bass and Keller Heard, together to describe how that's going to go.
And the vice principals. And to try, yeah, I mean, to try to understand this.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
Dean.
Yeah, yeah, who can argue against the zero increase, right?
You can.
If you give me time, yes. Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of people that would call for something dramatically different and I'm trying to fend them off as well. But again, my, you know, as you heard, my big thing was, you know, why the one and a half million dollar swing in the in the in the funding for health insurance. That was explained to me, that's an actuarial, there's an actuarial basis for that and not a, shall we say, let's make the budget look nicer basis for that. So I'll accept that for now. I am cognizant, even though I was not elected to this position, I'm cognizant of the fact that it's a board of nine folks from the town and that we are representative. In lieu of a town meeting getting together in a church basement, we meet. And so I think if you're to ask some people in town, they might say something like this. Great, it's zero percent and we're spending, it's the single largest item in the town's budget. You know, it's seventy-eight million dollars. I'm sorry, seventy-seven million dollars, seven, seven and a half million dollars. A lot of money, a lot of people don't mind spending a lot of money when they get something for it. I don't want to boil down kids' education into a commodity. But people are willing to spend a lot of money when they feel that the kids, whether it's their kids, grandkids, their neighbors' kids or just kids in general are getting an education. I think a lot of people are thinking on the budget side, it's business as usual, even if it is a zero increase, it's business as usual. Whereas in reality, the kids are not being educated. I realize this is a budget going forward. But as we sit here, the kids are not being educated the way they normally would be for all different reasons and without regard to efforts being made to to keep things going. So I think people feel, will probably look at something like this and feel like, yeah, you know, in some quarters of the world, it's business as usual when in fact that isn't happening all across the board. This is not, we're all in this together kind of thing. Just making a commentary, I'm expressing, I think, what a lot of people would be thinking, not offering to change any of the numbers or anything like that. Just saying that it's it's good that it's a zero increase. Is it? Now, does it all sit a hundred percent well on all tires when it lands with all people? No. So that's my, that's my comment on that one.
Thank you, Dean. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Susan, just for clarification, could you please just read the, just to make sure that we're just consistent? Would you please read the motion that's on the floor again?
To approve the FY twenty-two budget in the amount of seventy-seven million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, ninety dollars, which is a zero percent increase over the current budget.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. This motion has carried.
I am abstaining and not so much because of the, what's in, what's in the budget. It has more to do with how some of the money is being spent with the vice principals, the additional vice principal and so forth. So I am going to abstain, abstain until there's more clarification. Thank you.
All right, Joan, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to information proposals, letters and communication, Liz?
Yeah, I've received a number of emails. I'm sure all of you have too, especially regarding the return to school. And I'm really happy to hear, Susan, that your meeting is coming up to roll that plan out. The sooner we get information out to the to parents, I think the happier the community will be. So there have been a number of communications. I've had some conversations with people in my neighborhood. But a lot of, a lot of emails. The other thing I wanted just to tell you that is that there was a competition this weekend that started this weekend for the Connecticut History Day. And I just wanted to keep you apprised of that is the the awards assembly will be on March sixth, excuse me, on March eighth at eleven thirty. And I will send out the link to all of you, so you can see that Fitch Kids, hopefully, will be going on to the state competition. So I'm proud.
Thank you. Rita.
I received, as well as everyone, all the comments, all the parents who really like their children back in school full time, as I think all of us do. And I believe, well, now that the governor has moved up the teacher's vaccination to March first, I don't believe it will take the whole month of March. I think it'll be very, you know, three weeks. But even one, one vaccine, whether you get Pfizer or Moderna, even after one vaccination, you're ninety-two percent covered. So the the three weeks, the second one is just an additional, like a booster for a longer period of time. But so I'm hoping we're going to get our children back extremely soon to five days a week, starting with our preschool elementary students and working on up from there.
Thank you, Rita.
I think, Susan, I think Mrs. Austin is doing a tremendous job and is working very, very hard to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Rita. Jane? Jane, nothing?
No, but just be sure to understand, folks, that when you get vaccine, vaccination number two, you will be miserably sick for a day.
Yes, yes.
Not everybody.
Lee, do you have any?
I was, had a really good time giving out the food, the food baskets, baskets, boxes. And there's another one at St. John on Friday from ten to, I think, ten to twelve. And I will be there too. It was great.
Are you giving out autographs or?
If one single person asked, they can all have them. No one has ever, but thank you.
Rosemary?
Yes, I've also received quite a few conversations from people about wanting to have students back at least full time and more so as possible, meaning activities. And I also have met with GASP and they have some interesting projects for students that they're very excited about instituting. And so I volunteered Susan. And they're also very interested in at some point coming up with a new schedule for the mental health summits, because they find them extremely useful. I also have been attending the Sound Community Services. And I just have an announcement to make. If anybody has any extra diapers, the Young Adult Services at Sound Community Services, which are kids who have aged out of the FC and are getting services now continuing, they're doing a diaper thing for the community and they will be giving it to the shelter. So if you have any extra diapers, send them over to New London.
Would that be the Sound Community, if people were interested in doing that?
The Sound Community, or they will pick them up if you text them.
So maybe Joan, if you could give that information to Joan, Joan could put that in the minutes. So at least we can, that people can have that, that would be great.
I would love to.
Thank you, Dean.
Yeah, I've gotten the same messages from from people that everybody else has gotten regarding desire to have the schools reopen. I, the sense that I draw from it is that people are, the waters come up. You know, they're, they're, they'll take it, but only so far.
Yep. Dean, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
Don't disagree with you. Andrea?
I have also gotten the letters and the emails. And I deeply appreciate the thought that went into all of them. And I'm appreciative also to be on that committee, so that we can really move forward with this, because I think Dean is very correct. But the only thing I received today, an email from a student that we had about thirty years ago, who's now living in Europe, and he emailed to, to tell me that Mrs. Dander, Mrs. Ellen Dander had died. And she was a wonderful English teacher. He sang her praises, and he had her 30 some years ago. And I just wanted her family to know, and the community to know, how much we appreciated Mrs. Dander.
Andrea, thank you.
Ken, I was going to mention that also about Mrs. Dander, but there was another lifelong educator in Groton, Judy, Judy Ebbinghaus, and she also had, had passed away. So we lost two very wonderful educators, and I did want just to have them recognized tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I was going to say that, but thank you. Jay?
Yes, I received the same emails, obviously, about school opening, as well as a couple of emails in support of the athletic director going full time. So they'll be very happy to see that that happened. I also want to say that Ernie, in our Food Services Department, did an excellent job last week with the distribution of the farm-to-family boxes. Our own Sam was there directing the traffic, because it got crazy. Larry Croxton and his wife were there. The Elks Club sent a contingent to, to, to hand out boxes. The municipal employees came over, and despite the, the, the period of heavy snow, people came out for that distribution, and they really appreciated Food Services providing it.
Jay, thank you for recognizing that. Again, thank you. I have also received the same emails that the rest of the board has done about the athletic director to reopening the schools. I have shared with the board about Jerry Lachlan reaching out to me about making sure that we, for the board to hear more about the fields. And then I also received an email in regards to, he doesn't want to make it public yet, because it, he wants to try to do something really spectacular that I forwarded to Susan. It was actually from a town counselor about honoring an individual. So I just wanted to let you know that I've had that correspondence, and I just passed it on to Susan, so that we can kind of take a look at that. And I just want to pay, have us pay attention to our meeting there. There is a tentative one, March 29, at the end of next, actually in a month, where we're going to be meeting with the, our friends at the Town Council, because we are now going to, this is now our budget that we will be defending. And so we'll need to sort of just keep, keep, keep abreast of when these meetings are going to be. I'll make sure that we get plenty of notification, but at least I wanted to get that into our calendar. For, for future agenda items, I have the fields, I have the positions, the campus positions, Rita, that you wanted us to, to have a more in-depth look at. I have, what, what other agenda items? I have it written down someplace.
Cap, did you want the, the CAPS blueprint? Would the board be interested in hearing from Fran Rubenowitz on that in, in the future?
Yes.
I don't know if, if March is going to be, you know, she's pretty busy, but she does do an outstanding job kind of making us aware of that.
Even, even in May, I mean, you know, it's, that would be wonderful. She is great.
I also wonder if we need to, and Jay, maybe this needs to be thought about in finance, is that we probably should be paying attention to what this, the decrease in the educational cost grant. And what does that mean? Does he try to, is he going to try to fund it in a different way? Which is what.
I don't believe that it, it doesn't affect Groton.
Okay.
Because we're an alliance district, I think Ken was double checking on that.
Any other agenda topics that I have missed?
Kim? I'm wondering if someone from the town could provide us with a update on all the construction going on around town? And what the anticipation is for those projects to be families? I think it's important for us to keep on top of, you know, that project during the, near the subbase. I don't know if that's completed yet. I know the one in Mystic is still very up in the air, so I, I don't expect we'll get any concrete information there, but like, what's the status of ceiling? I think we need to be aware of where the population centers are growing in town, and which ones are anticipated to add students, you know, to the district potentially.
And I think that that would be a great liaison conversation, because that's when the Town Council, RTM, and the Board of Ed come together. So if it doesn't work there, then we need to, we need to have a better conversation. But I would, I would hope that that's where that, that conversation would happen. So Lee, between you and I, we need to remember, and Andrea, we need to remember to make sure we ask that question at the liaison about where the, where the construction projects are in terms of the apartments, so that they can be planning with us around populations, and because it does impact our schools. Any other future?
Well, Ken, you might want to just mention about, we're going to be in negotiations with our custodians and tech workers.
Thank you.
I, I was going to ask Susan if we could have our new director of, is it Information Technology?
Student Data Manager.
You know, we've never met him, so sometimes it'd be at some future meeting. It would be great to meet him.
I plan to have, I plan to have him at the March regular board meeting. I just think, great, going on tonight, that we would have it.
That's great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Yes. Motion to adjourn. Good night, Gracie.
I got Lee saying, Lee saying, second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, adjourn, meeting is now over.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye, Mark. Thanks a lot.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Sam. Hi, Rita.